Right, Commissioners, your meeting is live.
And then basically, 41 July 17th, to be in the Rattler County Commissioners, please stand if you want to.
What do you mean, it's taken by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Good morning Commissioners, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director. I just wanted to ensure if you are supportive of me sending an email to our, internally to our employees regarding your decision about approving COLA. We've done that in the past as a way to, for them to realize, you know, the recognition of the hard work, but I want to make sure you were supportive of that. Thank you.
Let's just hear. Okay, Thursday afternoon, I went to Topeka to follow up on my last, well, Memphis general checkup and lab work that was completed earlier in the year. All seems to be going fine at this point in time. Thankfully, no appointments will be needed on this count, which is great news. Yeah, I think I've decided I'm gonna go some different directions on a few things. More news on that later. Friday afternoon, had a couple of meetings here at the office, certain constituents over budget process and just taxes and spending in general. Work through that. Everything should be okay this year. Who knows next year? And we'll deal with that as it comes across. The other meeting was with our contract attorney, David Cooper, discusses my agency is working on behalf of Riley County. Some of the things I might like to see resolution on meeting forward as well. Saturday morning, attended Riley County Republican Breakfast over at Hy-Vee. I gotta say, Hy-Vee, generally just for grocery stores, that's pretty good stuff there. Breakfast included.
Yeah.
Very impressed with that. It takes a little long to get it out, but, but it's, it's worked away. I'm always impressed with it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Heard an update, a discussion on the upcoming judicial constitutional amendment that will be taking place in the primary round of the 2026 midterm elections, not this election cycle, because that question did come up. That happened in municipal elections, that will be next year. I've heard from some of the various state representatives, senators in the area, some local municipal candidates as well. There's a Secretary of State candidate who spoke, gave an update on behalf of Riley County, including some of the projects we're working on. Of course, the big item, the 2026 county budget, do lots of dialogue and discussion, as you can probably imagine. Well, you know, it could be worse. Could have been worse. It went to a boat like concert of meetings. Anyway, back on track. I think we get you a towel or something. Well, that's a $10 mistake right there, too. You're gonna smell like Starbucks for the next year. Yeah, that's, that's world. Okay, well, also over the weekend, I spent some time trying to unpack all the information from the 2026 annual conference and exposition from National Associations of Counties, took place in Philadelphia. Not getting that information out real quick, but it just happened, so it's gonna take some time. I'm just curious to see what they discussed, particularly in terms of the policy resolutions. And then just got caught up on correspondence and other information for the rest of the week as well. Glad to see the rain yesterday. I haven't checked my rain gauge yet, but that was surprising. This morning was a surprise. That just means it's gonna be hotter than usual, but let's come in anyway, so I guess we just have to deal with it. So it's all done.
Okay, well, Thursday afternoon meeting, attended the Zoom meeting for the Electoral Circle, what was one order saying? Meeting was to have a vote of the Electoral Board on the items approved of the meeting before the board in the June. And in June, there wasn't a quorum of the elected. Lots of items under discussion, including the consolidation of workforce centers, also that is basically most of the state. We don't have that whole spread workout. Then after workforce meeting, I attended the city county meeting, the city ball. City manager gave an update on Manhattan, gave to the prepared stoplights, had a 113, Marvet. Feedback they got from a lot of people on the keep it. And then they discussed a potential survey for the water facility in St. Paul. Jason Youngers answered some questions from the county commissioners on the survey and other issues concerning the water facility in St. Paul.
I'm standing.
What?
Oh, water facility, that was.
Well, they're gonna do a survey.
During the survey. And I can suggest that they join the whole county rather than just the city.
Well, the school district as well. I mean, they've got invested interests.
Yeah. Yeah, no way, if it's all districts. Anyway. And then future county meeting issues were identified by the city manager and that's the session, which is so. I had input into this meeting and hope to take more input in the futures. Friday, I took my card for some diagnostic tests. There was some problems. Nothing showed up. And then I had a late tea session. Saturday evening, I went over to Bruce McMillan's house for his annual barbecue. It was really well attended. The food was great. It was really hot. The people, people got through it and sat around and they had, there were a lot of people that I hadn't seen for a long time. He says, he said since last one.
I had this email, she didn't think about it. Can't miss this year, but I don't think we have that moved next year.
Anyway, and then Sunday, I went to church and then reviewed the agenda and documents for today's meeting and then this afternoon, it was long for me. That's all I have.
Well, after our meeting Thursday, closed on a new house, which was a mess. They had so messed up, but the other people pretty close Friday. The base.
Oh.
Yeah.
You've had a bit of time.
It was frustrating. Spent way too much time there to get them. And then after that, we had the city county meeting, cast over a lot of it, but. Like I said, it sounded like a survey, at least they're gonna invite cities, public one, they're gonna send it out to, sort of, do a survey thing. Hopefully they'll get a better representation.
No, no, I, I think everybody is starting to get surveyed out.
Yeah.
So that may be a good thing and maybe a bad thing.
And I mentioned, I said, need to be assured, when you lose 20 questions.
Yeah.
I start through.
Well, they need to give you, you know, not only do you want that, but are you willing to pay at least my?
And are you willing to pay, are you willing to subsidize the operational cost? Because that's gonna be easily three quarters of a million dollars a year, if not more. And that never gets discussed.
Estimate 750 to 1.5 subsidy each year.
That's just.
Now, already have over a million subsidy. That's why I don't just put it top over, see the pool, but.
Same as the wire shovel.
Because it's not brand new.
Yeah.
All right, Friday morning, I was on K-Man on Mattson's show, I think I did, or Ryan.
It's like you got tarred and feathered.
No, eight pride. Let's see, Saturday, had a birthday.
You spent it working.
Spent it working at the new house.
No joy.
And then a little kid, my little son and his family came over for cake that evening.
So did you get moved?
No, we have sold ours. Yeah, I mean, it's, haven't finished on ours yet. No, we're just good. We got a couple of weeks. There's stuff we want to do, but. And that's all I had.
Free for business, Commissioners. First time I have any motion to authorize making a move to apply for the home and apartment grant on behalf of Riley County.
Should have started my walkover earlier. Just want to say a couple of things about the grant application, what's in your packet, and I have some updated copies here. I need to know which one you want to sign. With the Riley County answers, there was a few that they needed us to sign. I got that done. For the contact name, I have a version that has Greg and I have a version that has John. The context is gonna be, yes, you got the grant or no, you didn't get the grant. So I don't know. And I put my name as the program person. I can't remember the exact name they use. So I didn't know if you guys had a preference on to which.
I would probably just say this year, so I probably think I do.
And I have Greg signing.
Yes.
You know, I couldn't find it this morning, but I was, there was a difference between what the 55,000 household was different from the gas change. And I couldn't find it. They look like something on the.
That's the state of the funds. That's what was the constitutionally granted. That's something.
Yeah, I couldn't find that number. But anyway, 55,000 household is pretty low. But, you know, hopefully, I guess they have to keep it.
Well, I think they're, I, I think that's on an individual basis.
So the 55,000 is the household, household income.
Any kind of households, which would be really hard to make the payment, you know, to.
So that's just the number they want the household to bring into Riley County with them. So that's the two requirements of the grant itself. Is outside of Kansas and 55,000 household income that they're bringing with them.
You said everything else is updated, names, everything else?
Yes, yep.
Then I want to make a motion to authorize, make my move to apply for the home in the Hart Lane Grant on behalf of Rattler County.
I would second that.
Move in second to make my move to submit a home and apartment grant application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, please sign. There's three, I agree.
That might be the worst one yet. It's great. I'm mad at things and stuff in my head on the weekend.
Thank you. Next Commissioner, the motion to approve the Rattler County Clerical Service Agreement with Schneider Beacon.
Not sure if you guys have any questions. This is the one we brought the last time.
Jacob digged it out, got it all. I thought it was frost.
Jason?
Yes.
Well, we now will make the motion to sign the Conventional Service Agreements with Schneider Beacon. It has previously been cleared by the Commission pending the updates by Jacob Ham.
I'll second.
And move in second to sign the Clerical Services Agreement with Schneider Beacons, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chair, please sign.
Is that coffee? Does that take coffee in some of the things or something?
I was gonna ask if you enjoyed your coffee this morning.
I'd say we've got some coffee back there, but I'd like to keep it in the pot.
What's your reaction to this?
And I still live in the office and still didn't know.
Now it costs you three coffees, because now you owe Vivian.
Well, she got a lot too.
Oh, you spilled it in your shoe. Spilled it in your shoe too?
Yeah. And so it's Monday, there's coffee, she's ready, drinking coffee. So I'm assessed in the office. Maybe it's so true. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Next Commissioner, the Taxual Corrections.
With no questions, then I'll make a motion to approve the Taxual Corrections, is ready?
I would second that.
And move in second to sign the Taxual Corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Thank you. Next Commissioner, Riley County Employee Action Fund, Dana Micah Newhire, Election Specialist, Election Department. Felicia Kealan, Respeaking Superior Counselor, Health Department, Separation of Service. Helena Chase, Public Health Nurse, Health Department, Separation of Service. Haley Morrow, Elections, Clerical Assistant, Part-Time Separation of Service. All three, please sign.
I just was going to mention that the election specialist, so we had that open from 6:00, 5:00 until we filled that, which was about two weeks ago. And we did get 36 candidates, and this candidate, I think Rich and Susan are really excited about, she has previous elections experience, not just experience at clerical, so really excited about that. And then you see Helena's in there, and Helena is the person who will be taking the seasonal nurse position. So this is her green sheet for the full-time position, and we'll come back with the seasonal.
But Dana, election, we're all excited about, because we, here, she's their main election person. So we got a good employee, we lost a friend.
Oh, yeah.
I think we've lost a couple to them too, over the years.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I just want to make sure they know what the gold sheet is for.
I just want all the attention that, oh, I'll pay their attention.
Wrong kind of attention, yes. At least I'm not wearing like a white shirt and, you know.
I didn't expect this, now. Maybe that's what it is. I think that's what it is. It is, it gets strong. I know with Starbucks, that stuff smells nasty.
Yeah, and it was the dark roast too, so it's intense. I can smell it like literally. I know, my shoes, I don't.
You like this?
Well, he's gone. He's, he's in love with it. Yeah, no, he probably will hear the story from someone, Mr. Vargo.
They're gonna start, like, trace down, but like, air freshener.
Yeah. Jimmy's still we love. I don't need the appetite. I really don't.
Thank you. Next Commissioners, Rattler County Position Action Form's Networked Systems Engineer in IT GIS Department, range 21. Open and tense out with it twice, and that's, yep, that's listed twice. One Networks Systems Administrator, IT GIS, 16.
Yes, so these are, these are the two positions. The one position that you approved will be called an administrator. The current position that we have that was an administrator, we have learned in the IT world that an engineer is a higher responsibility level and skill set than an administrator. So we're asking you to change Chris's current title to engineer and the new position to administrator. So you're signing off so that we have that, you know, documentation. We're not adding, yeah, no, and that's why I wanted to talk a little bit.
I was really worried there for a second.
And the form does say that the incumbent, I don't think it's on your packet, but it does say that this incumbent, you know, there's already incumbent in the position. So there's no budget change, no salary change or anything like that to the engineer position. Just a title change. There's mud.
We get a motion, Commissioners.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to change the name of one position to Network Systems Engineer. And I guess we're opening up the position officially of Network Systems Administrator.
So.
I would second that.
And move in second to change title of one position and advertise for the second position. Favor?
Aye, thank you.
All three, please sign.
I thought for a second we had a lot of openings. I was a little nervous about that, okay.
Organizational charge, need to stretch a piece, but then the timing makes a big difference on what we get around with this.
Yeah.
Doesn't chat.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any changes in the minutes?
Yeah, one hundred.
It's not a position thing, but.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's like your dawn time later.
It's time.
Get a motion on the minutes.
I would say I would make. First, the minutes is presented from our meeting on July 17th.
I'll second. The move in second, a brief minutes of the July 17th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Out of tentative agenda, Lieutenant Commissioners. Need, I don't know, next week's press conference. Not yet, Liz Holly at nine o'clock. Hopefully she knows the change of location. Wasn't inside. Not weird.
He's related to the. I didn't know. Did they stipulate going to North? Usually the tank trails, they're going north and south, but all the rest of it, it's active. Right, it's like part of visual.
Oh, that's, is that all tank?
I don't know, maybe that could be anything. I mean, that could be, it's gonna be all. Yeah. I've seen it, but it's driving from work and it's on the other side. I mean, I don't think there's, I don't think they're pointing in that direction, but I mean, you just can't get away from the good, the noise and the, um, weird profession of it.
Sound like a bottle rock.
Right, you know, I think Rich has got it right. You just start pretending very long. I mean, I know eighteen-year-olds, right? You need the, the two cup thing that Rich is.
I know, the divorce. Not sure about that. Yeah.
That came up in Saturday's discussion too, where I've, um, I just got the information. There's the, yeah, we have, we have, we have sent the. Asking questions, how I think there, what is it? As that's, is this. You know, so. He was actually, and let me answer the question. He's filled with the gaps pretty well. He's, he's on top of that.
Okay.
So you might reach out to him.
Yeah.
They've been within about six months.
Yeah. See, I asked you to send.
Yeah. I figured, yeah, me too. Maybe the other random big names have jumped in, so that was the last.
Is there gonna be more than jump on?
I, I don't think so. I don't.
I wouldn't. I knew for, I, I was just like, they can even try to.
But that was, it was gonna be two, two.
Yeah.
Remember, taller, I wouldn't surprise, but it wouldn't surprise either.
After you get interested.
There's still one.
One, so I, yeah, we were trying to find this, and it's. Yeah, most likely.
And it's, they're really. Really, yeah.
I think that's the overwhelming choice.
That's why I feel this, I think this is things of this.
Yeah.
Say treasures, I listen on common split. Yeah, like this, it is. Yeah. You try and make some good, I think it was a good one. Yeah, sent me an email this morning, so it's gonna be someone.
And we were unloading that U-Haul, right?
Yeah.
Is that down, or come down to?
No.
I think, I wouldn't think I said I wanted the right.
It's just a little shit I have to.
Right, from, from where that came from.
Yesterday, I had just a downpour all afternoon. It was like, after church, it was like just.
See, there were places raining.
I know. So it changes.
Lots of lightning here.
That's how, I'm into the gates.
Uh, usually they do it on that. We did that.
About that far.
Um, once, yeah, we did. She was spying.
Yep.
We did.
We had the ones, you probably got three quarters, ninety hundred. Hmm, you probably got three quarters, ninety hundred.
I had two four. I had my gauge seven inch.
My corn is now eight foot tall. Yes, buddy. Jeez, yeah.
My wings are. I was gonna spray. I sprang. It's gonna rain.
Glad we got it with the hot weather.
Still no. They're not this morning, but.
Yesterday evening was horrible too. Uh. I still do not like summer. Just in case you're wondering, John, I still don't like.
No, I know. I just hope this doesn't drag on to like mid late September. That's all.
Summer better.
I really don't like either extreme anymore. When. Like the nice calmness of April and October. This I need to read the Sandy. No, no. Oh, I'm sure they are.
I'm sure.
Where at? Reason why they don't have an English last there, Bismarck.
You know, it's just.
Picture perfect.
You're sorry, so it's not the more and more sad we get. That's critical.
You know.
So.
Everybody keeps asking if I'm going to Ireland and then I'm like, no.
You know, unfortunately, I'm sorry. If so, it's like.
And it just would make.
Flying Ireland.
My daughter wanted me to go up.
Flying from the TV to the couch in my own apartment. As far as I'm going.
Logan gets to go and my daughter can go to tomorrow. So we'll be on, we'll be on the.
Instead, or if I still have to sit on plane for ten freaking hours there and ten hours back. It's just too long to be on a plane.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just messing with my brother. I guess drop it out, but I'm like ninety bucks now I go to the game, but like free Uber rather or something. What else?
The tickets to the game? Yeah, I figured that was gonna happen. Yeah, and. But they. It's not a real terribly expensive trip overall, so they can plan it.
They had.
No, I'm not. I don't.
Yeah.
I don't want to be crammed on flights.
Yeah.
I probably take boats before I take a plane. That way serious. Well, that's fails. I could swim. You can't really.
I saw her.
Yeah. Falls fails. I put a life jacket on swim.
How long of a flight is that?
It's about ten hours.
That's a time.
But his boat is long.
It is, yeah.
Rather go to Germany.
I don't know. I put the right motor on some nitrous. You might. Might gain an extra hours.
If you get on a military flight to go on.
That's true.
I took the first.
Yeah. That probably. No, no, still one. Guess if you went to Kansas City, you could take a direct flight to any place on the east of those and then it's. To, I guess, the unknown.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why wait?
I just.
I think the military. One of those people who has associated fourteen hours.
I did stop.
They let you.
To the other building.
He is.
On Friday.
My own.
Sorry.
You know that?
I would consider.
I mean, what was your noise? Hey, don't be here.
Counselor.
So you got.
Yeah, I can see that. Oh, yeah.
Checked out.
People see like stray bags, so. I could still think that word. I think that'd be a cold that handles. And what I get up is new. Just crammed in.
You would wear that.
Far more frame where it was. Me say. I could actually wear myself.
It's just.
Yeah. Don't just tear that Frankie down, but.
They started saying, you have any flights?
Just the metal. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they have to.
Then practically.
Yeah.
No, honestly, that was one of the things that is like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Maybe ten hours. That's one that's probably. Well, I looked at two. Once again, two day. They need to sleep in skin time. Pittsburgh someplace there and then.
Yeah, I've always wanted to go to his picnic and I've just never taken the time to do it. Of course, I didn't have.
I think it is because. Where it's a. Better than you guys in Cleveland in Pittsburgh and New York City.
It's.
Think there was an option for uh. Charlotte.
Yeah, but I was.
Yeah. And it's high.
The reason I guess is because Casey's brother who was considering wine. Those things.
We had that.
And then we. Heard it set off. Did. We'll have.
On him? Maybe not, maybe not.
We'll see.
Yeah. It's almost that.
I have no reason to take a chance with this gaming. Honestly, no. But you're moving.
Yeah.
There's.
Sometimes in life, sometimes in life, things come up.
Yeah.
And then driving. And she's still spilt it.
Yes, I'm still.
I can just imagine Brittany's heart rate in her nice little. Imagine Brittany's heart rate in her nice little car.
Wait.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to say I apologize for being late. I extremely overestimate my ability to read a map, so. Um, I don't have a lot that's new except for that um. The federal government has decided to um. Delay or stop any movement towards uh um ending our fourteen C certificate. So if you remember what that is. That is our ability to pay a special wage. Um, it's based off of um productivity could be over minimum wage or under minimum wage. Um, that's been a big push for quite a while and kind of working towards preparing for that. Um, the state looks like it. Might still continue to push that, but from a federal level that has stopped, so it's going to be interesting to see what happens with that. Um. There isn't, um, there's been some movement off of the statewide um. Waitlist. It is still at four thousand eight hundred and thirty individuals with one hundred and eighteen being in our four county area and the waitlist continues to be at ten years. Um, I have a lot of concerns with what's happening with Medicaid cuts. Um. Our services are not an entitlement service. So um medical care is, so the state will have to decide where they're going to come up with. Money and our services are at risk of that, of being cut um for funding. And that makes me nervous about what's going to happen with the waitlist, because if the state's getting less money, it's going to have to come from somewhere and of um. Continuing to take people off that waitlist is is a major concern. So um, we have exciting news and that. Uh, we completed our Raise the Roof campaign. Um, we raised two million, um, one thousand eight hundred and seventy one dollars.
You said two million?
Mm hmm. In uh just under two years, so um. Our project, we have some remodel projects that was going to be our phase three. We're actually skipping phase three. And moving towards phase four, which is uh replacing one of our main HVAC units um that we're kind of have to kick and. Baby along uh to keep running, so.
Sweet.
Yeah, right, exactly. And this is when it's going to stop working forever, right? It's when it's a million degrees. Um, and then uh replacing our um our main breaker panel, so. Um, the reason that we want to skip phase three is because um it's a lot of replacing carpet and the original, I think, um. Uh wallpaper, but with what's potentially coming down the line with unbundling of day services, because I spoke on that before. Um, I don't know if we're going to need to remodel things in our back, so I want to. Wait to spend that until we kind of know what's happening with unbundling of day services. There isn't. A lot of progress on what's happening with that. There's a technical writing group working on that, but right now um. Everything got pushed forward with um having to go to legislature before K Dads can make any changes. And so K Dads just have to send things to the governor before they send through legislature and um everything's kind of. On hold with not knowing what's happening with new administration and the coming potential new administration, so I'm not. Sure what's going to happen with the unbundling of day services yet, waiting on phase three for that. Um, for Grow Green Match Day, um, it was very successful and we raised sixty thousand four hundred and forty three dollars. Towards the replacement of two vans. Um, we're going to actually get a larger van than we've had in the past that will hold fifteen passengers instead of twelve passengers and then. Probably in the fall is when we'll be looking for um replacing a second vehicle um with those friends from Grow Green Match Day, so um. The the, I don't have a lot more information on Medicaid cuts, except for there's things like. Cuts to SNAP and TANF and stuff that's going to. Potentially affect our clients. We have a lot of clients that um you can afford to live through those services, so um. I don't know. There's a, I feel like there's a lot happening and nothing happening all at the same time um as far as that goes, so we're just kind of waiting to see what all of the ripple effects are going to be from those Medicaid cuts, so. Do you have any questions for me? All right, well, thank you so much.
You know where we are.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Next commissioner, the uh Coromar and Diane Creek at nine fifteen. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Uh, morning commissioner Coromar, I T I T G I S director um and Diane and Jacob are here from Health Department if there's further questions. Uh, but uh. Earlier in the year, or very beginning of the year, uh, it was approved through C I P to do a replacement of the E Z E M R. Uh, application uh that the Health Department uses. That C I P approval was for two hundred and fifty thousand. And uh, and then with that approval then was the development of an R F P uh to be released. Um. Diane and her team, uh, Breva and Jacob did a lot of research, uh, making sure that what would go into the R F P as far as their system functionality, pieces that they wanted and so forth. Uh, was. They worked on it diligently very well. Uh, we had. I don't know how many numerous meetings of their team combinations of and all throughout the process, including Jacob and so forth. And uh, then we got down to the details of the I T side of it, the functionality side of it, the uh. The legality side of it and have gotten to the point now we are where we are ready uh with your blessing to go ahead and release that R F P out to uh. Start the process of uh bids, uh vendor selection and uh and an implementation after that process goes through. Um, so the R F P we put in. Be put in there. Uh, if you wanted to see it, review it and so forth. Uh, but we do have in here, uh, as pointed out that uh with your blessing today, we would go ahead and release the R F P tomorrow. And get the uh process started. Um, again, uh, some of the backstory was that we're down to one of three. Three, yes, three uh counties that are still using this particular application. Uh, the trend is not going in the direction of our current vendor. It's going in the direction of 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 several others. And uh, the other two counties are. Talking about in the process of and wherever they're at, but also replacement and R F Ps as well. And uh, as as I advised before, when I presented to uh for the approval out of C I P, uh, I don't want us to be last. This is a. Big application, a lot of pieces to it, and I don't want to be the last one with a vendor. Uh, services will begin to decline quickly and as word gets out that that those are the type of things and the patterns that we see. Um, so uh in there, um. Release date tomorrow, deadlines for when to return, uh, an aggressive schedule. I like it. We want to push them, but an aggressive schedule of when to get contract start, which would be October. And uh, how hard we can push them to have a a an early spring completion if we can get it to that. Uh, but when the information goes out, the returns would all go to Diane and when we get to the dates of a selection process. Uh, we'll be working with uh Jacob on how we go through that. He's got some really great i ideas on how to uh. Score. Uh, if you will, uh, for lack of better word or the right word, Jacob may have comment there. But score them as they come in based on uh what we see out of their proposals. Uh, reviewing with existing customers, which they have done several of already. They they've done a lot of homework and so they know what they're looking for, which is good. So we want to be in this process, so. Um, if there are any questions for me, uh, Jacob or or Diane and her team, uh, we're willing to answer, but uh. We did want to bring forth and and ask for your approval to move forward on the release of the R F P.
Let's say, let's make sure that we're. Going to the idea of quality over speed here.
Yes.
Yes. Because this is a, this is a pretty big lift.
Yeah. It'll be big.
Yeah.
Lot of records in our current. I was here when we went to the current vendor, uh. Which was sleepless months and trying to work with them as far as the data transition and so forth. And uh, and and that will be where our I T role will be to supervise and oversee the the data migration and those things. There'll of course be quality checking that that it's there and then the functionality of the application. Um. Most of. Well, several of the vendors that are out there have done transitions from our current application that we have now, which is good. Uh, so that's another thing. You don't want to be first on that list either. That that creates a lot of headaches and so we're pretty confident out there already in the in the uh, the. The leading candidates or leading vendors that are there based on what we see across the state of what's being used, other counties, our size and so forth, that uh. We're going to have a good application and a good solution once we get to the process, but yes. We do have an aggressive schedule, but I will always pull the reins and I know they will as well to make sure that it's a quality installation over. Uh, a quick uh install, so yeah.
Good deal. No. I think we've gone through this pretty, pretty in depth.
Well, I would make a motion to um approve the um R F P issuance for the Health Department for their uh emergency records management.
I will second.
And move the second to approve the issuance of the R F P for the E M R replacement Health Department, all in favor.
I.
I.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And thank you to Jacob and Diane and everybody. It's been a good working group, so.
I agree.
Next commissioner, press conference at nine thirty.
It's on two, four, under two point two. Recruit twenty households, households recruited through, make my move, that's averaging coming over a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. That's because there's an average of two point three people that make that move at the same time. So it's not one person.
Grant said it's a minimum. Brad says, you're saying that's the average. They're saying that's what the average is.
That's the difference is that terminology.
It's just the, the minimum requirement for the grant is that households have fifty-five thousand, but these folks that make my move, because folks are saying that the average of what they move is at a hundred thousand. So they're basically, you know, kind of the selling point for them of like, well, we go above and beyond. On average, an average move is a singular person. It's two plus.
Yeah.
So you're taking in two different incomes that are husband, wife. Obviously, if there's a kid, there's probably no income, but but the other thing you take into consideration too is if you do have a child, that child is moving into the school district. And that school district is also going to get money for having the child there in the school district. So there's a monetary value there. I don't know what that is.
Well, it's, you know, I was getting one of a bunch of households. That, that difference. So that's, that's funny.
It probably, I know status rose at the bottom of the stack, but you have to factor in students.
I, I'm not, I'm not pushing what, but I was thinking it was like forty-eight.
Probably.
He is, he is accurate. And it's a lot of, it's part-time over full-time and there's, there's a lot of reasons. Next bill of caution.
Living, which is the company. Annualized would be seventy-nine. But there is statistics. Ninety percent of the people when you impact, like about sixty-four thousand.
Yeah. That's, is that family or is that single?
That is much. That comes from the census report.
I think that's probably a thing. A husband, spouse, whatever. Switched directions a little bit too. Downpours and snowstorms here. Likely to occur. We know they are. Of course, with new windows, the weather, the lighting, the blinds and see it better too, you see. Looking forward to seeing what's going to be. Oh, I don't know. That one door over there, the corner over there. I've seen a couple of times your wet come in like a river. I'll be interested to see what that cold strike comes in. Depends on what time of the day.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't think she's paying attention. You didn't hear Corey, did you?
Oh, I know she heard. She heard a mom where I went. You also get the mom ignored. Yeah.
And eventually the mom is there. Does she know your middle name?
Oh, true, yeah. You know, Amanda and Ann were asking. Desk last week that having the thing can flip up, you know, which we probably give one for Elizabeth too, with a cup holder, with a cup holder.
I don't know. Some waterproof shoes for Christmas is going to be one for sure. She probably has some little of the phone.
Morning Commissioners, Alvin Perez, Operations Manager. Public notice we have is a structural replacement project out on Fairview Church Road. And it is scheduled to begin Monday, July twenty-eighth. It's approximately six tenths of a mile east of Conray Road. So we'll be closing Fairview Church Road to through traffic from Conray to Holman. And we should be done hopefully by Wednesday, July thirtieth with the project and moving out of there. I did want to re-mention the one that was John had presented last week for West Sixty-seventh. We are currently moving the materials and equipment down there to get started on that tomorrow. So through traffic will be halted at four, North Forty-Eighth at Street down to Anderson Avenue. We're going to try to minimize the impact on Anderson while the project's going on. So those are the two I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next mission objective minutes. Yeah, I've never have gotten, I've never used those. We use them kids do all the time.
Remember when they used to have the roller bars?
Yeah, I do.
That was actually better than this, you know. Remember when they used to have the roller bars?
Yeah, I do.
That was actually better than this, you know. Yeah, that's, remember I had a Dell one that had the elevated one on there. So it's almost like having a mouse, but it was still attached.
Greg, you watching the old K State basketball team play in that tournament? They, they squeaked one out Saturday.
Yeah. Then tonight they play KU.
I just know you're a big basketball fan.
Those uniforms they've got, the Lavenders.
Sweet. They just played the one.
They always seem to win the first one and then they lose in the second round.
They had a warm-up game. They played scrimmage with KU prior to, and I'd seen you coverage on that.
It is, yeah. If you got the YouTube TV, it's automatic. I think you can buy them in sections or something.
I agree. I like their uniforms too.
Yeah.
Cool. It's nice.
Yeah. It was even six thirty, seven thirty. The old Kansas City Municipal. Yeah, it brings back memories.
See Johnson got picked up on a pro contract.
Yes. Now the other Jim is actually coming back. He didn't really transfer back. Well, he's coming back.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good. We're gonna need all the help and get it.
I think there's gonna be more talent on this team. I just don't know how it's gonna turn. Yeah. I just know how it's gonna work. Cohesiveness. Hard to say. And we're still in the mix for that top ten wide receiver two, four-star guy out of Texas, down to Tech and Baylor. Let's be making.
High school kid?
Yeah, it's supposed to be making that decision tomorrow. I, I think it's going to be Tech, but we'll see. I wish we could get some really good. Let's put twenty-six class.
Once, that's a decision that we have to start. Publicizing.
Yeah. This year is. Yeah. I think that's start doing that by August first, even though there's apparently an executive order that's been written that's supposed to change.
Yeah, I heard about that.
I, I don't even know the depth of that yet.
I haven't heard any details.
We're good. Good morning Commissioners, Jacob Hansen and I'm Riley County Councilor here. Just to go over my pending projects. Things are going relatively smoothly. Haven't really had any issues. I think we're, we're firing at all cylinders relative to of course, our down position, but the Contract Council has been helpful and we continue to work with them on certain issues and especially regarding the recent case with the RCBD gun range. Of course, we've got a timeline on that. We're working to make sure we get that adequately responded to. As far as any very specific projects, one thing I wanted to bring up as well as and say thanks to Barry in his office over there. I had the opportunity to go over and share with him my diversion agreements that I've drafted up for our criminal nuisance abatement cases. And thankfully I got a pretty good grade on, on that from Barry. So we're looking forward to getting those out to the defendants and we'll hopefully see some, some real, real resolutions over there. As far as criminal abatement, criminal nuisance payment goes. As far as any other specific projects, that, you know, you all are pretty well aware of everything that I'm taking care of and of course putting out the small fires that come up daily. So unless you guys any, have any specific questions on any sort of projects or curious on where things are, I'm happy to answer those questions. Oh, it did. Very good. I'm hoping it was favorable for us as it should be. Yeah. I, I don't know if I, if I had the opportunity to tell you guys, but I, I know, I think I spoke about it a bit. But the fact that it's a published case is a pretty significant portion of this. And that means, you know, our case and the rule that thankfully not to, uh, blow my ego too much, but they ended up using the rule that I suggested for law. And so that's going to be utilized in all cases moving forward. That's Kansas law now. So pretty significant. Now, of course, the opposing side has thirty days to appeal to the Supreme Court. So you know, the battle's not over. This would just be stayed. Yeah. They, they, this is not an opportunity thankfully for them to go to federal jurisdiction. So it doesn't raise a, a, a federal question or does it have diversity of citizenship? So we're safe there. Oh, I, I would actually, sorry. There was one other thing I did want to mention that was pregnant and that's that make my move, the contract portion of this. That I'm working of course with John and everybody to get that to you guys. Hopefully we'll have it, you know, by Thursday. But there's a chance it may be a little later and that's just going to be because we want to make sure we get some sort of obligation from the chamber that they're going to help participate and, you know, provide that overhead in kind expense. So that way we don't have to put that on, on Amanda, but that will be working its way through the kinks and, and hopefully it'll be before you guys are relatively soon.
I did try to establish contact over the weekend, but Darren is out of, out of state at a conference and I didn't really want to push that. So we'll get there.
Yep. Any other questions or thoughts?
Thanks Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next commission, Michael Rizkala at nine fifty-five. Next commissary, I'm Michael, this caller at nine fifty-five. Use heavy.
And the white and the franny.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
The cream is really hard to get out. Yeah.
Have you ever used a Missress? I'm telling that stuff. Oh, just to be started, you have another one in your hand. My daughter is not Missress, my youngest daughter.
Yeah, expressive, Missress, but I depend on disruption.
I mean, some of them are favored, this one, so you just put it in the capsule. Look, switch all the way over, and then you just wait until it's all light, then you click left. That's the only one, but you have to do, you have to do main, it's bleed clean. Which all you have to do, all, you know, that is, is it just runs the bleeding cycle, so you just pull it.
That's the method.
It isn't all the work, it's kind of copied, it's like you're just. That's true.
Correct.
Now, you, I'm starting, that's as far as I can skip up. Which that's.
He was good at exchange. Even if you said like, you have, like, there's two cars. Press button, walk away. I love my dogs, I have a lot of things, I come back, I'm upset. It's your own duty, you go on, play that. But one thing, ladies, don't take long, you're going to get, you're going to get your eyes out, and then take that. Get your contacts in, come back and see what I'm doing.
So tired, I'm looking. I know this is.
Yeah. Walk away, it's twenty-six. When you're focused, sleep on the dragon.
Yeah, well, I didn't, you think, but the dogs must have been. So that I have a lot of opinions. He's, you know, I'm really shocked that he in a count of nine, he makes no noise, but as soon as it's time, yeah, so, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Did you forget me?
Did you forget me?
Yeah.
On the weekend, they say to, um, then, yeah, he's barking. Oh my gosh, it's six thirty, I say to him, don't get that, please, you're out.
It's funny, he won't make noise, but instead namely doesn't, you go up, he loses face and just pushes him. Until she moves. Sorry, you want to.
Yeah.
I didn't have the issue, how long is yours?
Well, which that seems, uh, forty minutes.
Forty minutes.
But Henry just said, please, hold on, you're going to dress in it, so it's gonna have to be.
Yeah, yeah, the hour was right, I forgot. It's not bad, it's like a good decompression time.
It is. Well, you're out that, you know, predays, so I'm like, I'm, you know, like, never. But I don't lose any money, so I'm just gonna go home. So let's go home with life, put in the house or whatever. Pay for everything, there's something, like, focus back.
Yeah.
You were like, there's so many things, we're all bad, and we're in the gap, but I'm. Maybe we don't, yes, everything, yeah, I mean, yeah, this is, this is there. Like, she died, so yes, throwing the death of his toes, like, I was like, yes, we have, you know, several of them. Yeah, so, they'll do anything possible to, like, make his brother mad, and then everybody's crazy, and everybody's crying, and you're like. And we just sit down with a movie, and everybody, like, four years. And just, that would hurt. I'm just thinking, you know, as much as you can, just, yes.
Uh, yeah, the issue's all been, like, uh, do you know where it came from?
I will, honestly. I have seen plays, I don't know, I saw them. They've, they've never come out in front of me so far, but I had to two weeks ago, I saw them, like, in front of, actually, it was Monday, so I went back. Kind of, I was thinking that, but, um, they bring out, they're in front of the building, so I was like, oh. And if they, if they stop, and then they're out of camp, I know they did it, it was so.
I only had one, uh, that was smart. And it was like, there was, I think it was three P M, and I was just about him, I said that he's still back. He just started out, and then he was asleep, I was like, I just thought it was my fantasy. But can't, I can't.
Yeah, so I'm here, so it's, I was between in my land, headed up to the stretch, and he was a little, he walked down the street, and it was followed, he was far enough away, I started, so, he's also usually seen one, that is, yeah. One of theirs would look around, people, the other side slowed down. So they're look around, so I thought.
No, interesting.
No sense of urgency.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Always watching, always looking. Especially.
He being this one.
Yes.
I didn't open mine.
Oh.
But we hear pizza twice.
Yeah, I'm really tired, I'm really tired, I don't want to get. That's all, or something. So I ever, I ever, I have a capacity, maybe this is me, I want to get there with friends. We, it's, it's, I'm so, I'm like, I have some.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. How was it, this was. I think so, so there's a couple of us, Jacob, that have recently practiced.
I don't think it was. So much.
Yeah.
They were fucking down, better, sort of.
There, I got everything in house. Just make sure it's hardwood floors. We'll have to get some rubber mats if you're gonna keep toting her around.
Definitely, yeah, I was.
You know. I remember one time in the middle of that summer, mom had a old two-door Mustang, we even taken a pot roast to a pool party, this is up in Council Bluffs, Iowa, so right across the street, Omaha there. We spilled it in the car, forgot it. We cleaned it up, but we didn't clean it up well, forgot about it, and cut it in the car four days later, we had to tear carpet out, it was gross. Oh, my mom was so mad, we literally had to cut a chunk of carpet out of the passenger side. It was the middle of July, so you can only, you know, you can only imagine, it's like this type of weather. Oh, it was gross, it was gross. I don't, she ever forgave us on that one.
Right, well, now, that gives me time to.
Some people, some.
So I was trying to.
We got a recovery, it's something. Alright, so then, now, it was Ethan, or, and then six thirty, that's, I mean, we don't, we're hurting. Yeah. Honestly, I, I'm a little bit of a nice.
So. Hey, this is just, yeah, so, I should, there's no complaints. Yes. To be. Yeah, I don't think I can survive. What we did without those.
Can't, it just is a gunshot.
Books had.
They was more dependent on laptop or the PC, I think.
Then, I don't know, it's, it's.
Link to that, I guess, see.
Sure, it's different. Are you the Michael Commissioners?
Yeah. Think the other side. I, I don't know on that.
Oh, probably get a detail.
Good morning, uh, thank you for having me this morning. Such a beautiful meeting room, we'll probably, uh, book it at some point, um, very nice.
We've got decisions to make in the future.
All right. Um, a few updates, and, uh, so July twenty-fourth is the International Self-Care Day, and international self-care is observed annually on July twenty-fourth. It's a day dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of self-care for overall health and wellbeing. They are available same-day access, everyone is encouraged to walk in um, Monday through Friday. Also, crisis services are also available, both same-day access and crisis services are co-located at fifteen fifty-eight Hayes Drive. And serve a wonderful purpose. For a sad reality, unfortunately. Also, Back to School Month, supporting Young Minds School, um, based services at Pawnee are available, and as August ushers in the new school year, it is important to remember that mental health issues affect all ages, including college students and youth. And here's an interesting piece of statistic that recent surveys show that over sixty percent of college students face mental health struggles with forty percent considering withdrawal due to emotional, emotional stress. For youth ages six to seventeen, one in six youth experience mental health disorders annually, yet seventy to eighty percent do not get the help they need. We do have a comprehensive, um, uh, portfolio, uh, or presence in multiple school districts. Um, and, um, through our school-based services as well, so, uh, the school-based services at Pawnee do not only support the students, they support the students and the families, there is a community services component and case management that, that is also available for the students and their families, um. Manhattan and Riley County are both part of our school-based services. Um, a reminder about the upcoming match days, your support is needed and is important and necessary. Uh, August twenty-eighth to the twenty-ninth, Rural Riley County Match Day. Uh, through the Rural Riley County Community Foundation, September thirteenth to the fifteenth, Blue Rapids, uh, Rapids Circle of Giving Match Day. September eighteen, Clay Center Gather for Good Match Day. And September twenty-first, uh, Gather for Good Match Day, Clay Center Community Improvement Foundation, so. Um, there is more, uh, that you can find on our website. Around this time of year every year, Pawnee sponsors Stars Camp. And it is entering its twenty-fourth year, Stars stands for Strength, Teamwork, Attitude, Relationships, and Self Esteem Camp. Run by Pawnee Mental Health Community Services Team and stands as a beacon of hope and growth for children aged five to seventeen who have serious emotional disturbances, what we call SED. Stars Camp plays an important role in the lives of children facing significant challenges due to uh, severity of their emotional disturbances. For many, it is the only, um, camp opportunity that they can attend. And we provide a nurturing environment where they can thrive emotionally and socially, and they do lots of activities. Um, we sponsor two every year. Um, we have one for younger youth. And that was in Clay Center this year, that was June twenty-sixth. And Stars Camp for Older Youth, and that is August fifth to the seventh at Rock Spring Ranch, and every year, um, about ninety or more youth are served through this program, it is critical. Uh, no one provides it in the area. Grateful for the support that is provided by our community partners and supporters, um. And, and a big thank you to the generosity of the Butler Family Foundation for making this opportunity possible for our youth of community services points. Okay, I would like to, uh, put a plug for a town hall that the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas is stack teaming with Pawnee Mental Health on, so. Please save the date, Thursday, August fourteenth, five thirty to seven P M. And the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas is our trade organization. They will host the town hall focusing on the mental health priorities across this state, so this is a good opportunity for county commissioners to learn about what is happening at the state level, um, the impact of all of these, uh, policy changes, uh, innovation around the CCBHC model and more. The presenter will be Kyle Kessler, the Executive Director of the Association of Community, uh, the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas, um. And appetizers will be provided. You can expect an email from me in the coming days inviting you with some. Inviting you with some uh, instructions on parking. Like, that will be in Clay Center, United Methodist Church. Reason we do it in Clay Center, it's a central location in our ten county area. Your participation and anyone's participation is valued and appreciated and needed, so please come join us. Um, I wanted to update you on my appointment to the Governor's Behavioral Health Services and Planning Council. So our trade association, the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas, has nominated me to serve. On the Governor's Behavioral Health Services and Planning Council. And the appointment was approved by the Governor's Office, so I have been participating and attending and, and representing the Association in Pawnee. Um, the federal, so here's where this comes from. The federal government mandates that all states have a mental health services planning and advocacy advisory council. The Governor's Behavioral Health Services and Planning Council fulfills that role. My goal in serving is to advocate. For the priority items identified on behalf of our consumers across the community mental health center system. And also on behalf of the clients uh, serving our ten, ten county area. Uh, upcoming October second is our Inspiring Hope and Help. This is Pawnee's. Uh, premier fundraiser. Uh, this is October second at K-State Alumni Center. Uh, some people might remember this event as Driving the Dream, but it has been renamed Inspiring Hope and Help. Last year, we have a lot, had a lot of success. Uh, over a hundred and forty people attended. We would love to have you come join us and celebrate the success uh, with us. Now. I get a little excited about this, but next year will be Pawnee's seventieth anniversary. And this is a milestone for us. Um, I can't wait for the, what do you call seventy-five years, Diamond Jubilee or something like that, but that will be great. Um. And also just a quick update on our uh, promoting the integration of primary and behavioral health care. Um, last year, Governor Laura Kelly announced that Kansas has been awarded an additional ten million. In federal funding through the PIPBC initiative, promoting the integration of primary and behavioral health care. It took me a little bit to remember the acronym. This builds on a ten million dollar received in August twenty twenty-three as part of five-year grant. From the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Disorders Administration, SAMSSON. Pawnee was selected among four other CCBHCs across the state to receive the grant funds for a two-year period. Now, with all the uncertainty in the funding uh, landscape, we don't know. Your team will continue or not, we're hoping, we're um, keeping our fingers crossed and um, we will continue going down that path. Now, these funds provided us an opportunity to launch primary care services, and here's why primary care services. Are important to the my population we serve. Primary care services, physical screening in particular, is a CCBHC requirement. We do physical screening, but oftentimes when you ask a client of ours. Who does not have the means to pay, does not have insurance, or um. Does not have the proper education around the, the importance of primary care services. If you ask them who their provider is, they might or might not know or. A lot will, but some wouldn't. Here's the thing. Providing primary care services in conjunction with behavioral health and mental health. Behavioral health is a, is a larger uh, term for mental health as well, includes substance abuse services. All-in-one location. Provides better integration and better health outcomes. Our goal is to go live in October. So we're hiring practitioners and a whole team. Um, we are also making some renovations to the building. Uh, at um, Clapham Street, site our uh, two thousand and one classroom. We have also uh, implemented a patient portal. Our clients can uh, um, see their appointments on their phone, they can zoom. Um, request medication refills and the like, so. Uh, another big milestone for us and a significant investment. We're hoping that this would. Continue to benefit the community and build upon a sixty-nine year um, period of history. Up for Pawnee in for our community. Questions for me?
Mental Health Summit?
I'm sorry.
Mental Health Summit at the end of August in Hayes?
That's correct, and we have the.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
That's correct. Um, we have staff participating in that and multiple people from.
There's a Zoom option if you see a cohort or something, although you'd like to check out, so you don't have to do it in person.
And we can send more information.
I do have a question on your um, primary care that you're going to be operating. Have you worked with the health department and maybe you coordinate with them with what they're doing, or close to you guys?
We have not, but we do have conversations, ongoing conversations. This is separate because we're focusing on our client population. And it's specific to that client population. Uh, we don't want to take over the world of primary care services and.
Some clients may be going over there for some care and maybe you could coordinate.
And this is a great, a great idea. We'll definitely pursue that.
Yeah, it'd be good to coordinate some services, keep costs down.
Yes.
I think, Giti, with the potential renovations taking place at the Clapham site, we need to. Think a little bit more long-term about what the needs of everybody is for that particular facility and building and.
That's right.
Might be time to think about. If you guys need that more than we need that, maybe you guys need that building and how we need to maybe accomplish that and look at that.
We do need the building. We have been there since the early eighties, I would, I would say nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the county has been instrumental in our presence. Uh, at the building and it has been forty-four years.
Yeah.
Since we have been there. So we have done some work on uh, plumbing. We have added. Uh, a couple of exam rooms um, in the building. We have done. But we are working on um, fixing the, the driveway slash parking lot. Um, there will be a new one put in in the coming months and um, the building will be repainted. The exterior will be repainted. Um, but we have made some improvements already.
Absolutely. My opinion, rather than leasing that long-term, that maybe that's a facility that's better off in your hands than ours.
That will be great, and I, and thank you for raising this. Um. We have been at the building for forty, forty years. The county uh, is willing and is able. We would love to explore solutions for this and hand it over the building to Pawnee. Um, Pawnee has paid for the building. Uh, hmm, over forty years ago, the county took out bonds for Pawnee to, to build the building. Uh, if you go back in history, nineteen fifty-six, it was Riley County Mental Health Center. And as the time went by and other counties participated, it became Pawnee Mental Health in eighteen eighty-two, so. We would love to, and uh, thank you for opening the door to this conversation.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Uh, I mean, we've got a new facility that we're maintaining, so we're maintaining that under an offset one. Just need to figure out what's appropriate for both entities to make that particular transition, of course.
And we'll save the county some money.
Yeah. I think it's definitely worth the discussion, at least.
How would you like to pursue?
Well, I think we've had a short-term discussion about it. I think we probably have to get the city involved because it's a. A large parcel, we need to figure out. Be the big, the start of it, and then you just need to figure it out from there.
This is the city of.
We own the land, but we'd have to break it up, which means it'd have to be recent, somehow, that's, that's within the city, so. We'd have to look if, we'd have to figure out, we'd have to figure out where that line would be, what the expectation would be in.
Parking and, and the like would work. Just, just to clarify, Pawnee paid the county back uh. Many, many years ago for the building, so. That's, thank you for bringing this up. Okay. There's no further questions. I thank you for your continued support of us and commitment to our mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if you don't know, but you didn't have any questions, no? Okay, um, I'll move that the uh. Sorry. No, I'm sorry. I'm gonna move the county commissioners, including Chair Kinley, Vice Chair Bokey at Commission Four. With Jacob Anson, Inter County Counselor, John Allen, Public Works Director, Mandawitt Planning and Development Director. And Brian Foster, BG Consultants, recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client consultation exception. To the Kansas Open Meetings Act regarding confidential legal advice on sewer districts. And the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at. And ten forty, we do ten forty? He said we could do it at twenty, so.
I noted second, the county commission recessed into executive session for reasons previously stated. The attorney-client consultation exception to Kansas Open Meeting Act, in all favor.
I know.
Um, had a, one of the employees.
The meeting is live.
I was, are we on?
Yep, yeah, okay.
Didn't catch that. I'll move to the Board of County Commissioners to mount an executive session.
Second up.
It's been moved and seconded for the Board of County Commissioners to mount an executive session on favor.
Yes, we had consensus, right? I'll go ahead and move it to record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
Oh, is that good enough?
Been moved and seconded. The action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. Mr. Earl.
Good morning. John Allerman, Public Works, are we ready?
Yeah.
We're ready, okay. Moving ahead. I am here to ask to refill Custodian One position. Had a employee's file kind of resign, retire, not sure exactly what she's calling it, but then Friday will be her last day, so I am in the need to find a replacement for her.
I would make a motion to approve the public department advertised hiring the A B D Sodas one position.
Uh, second.
Moved and seconded to move Public Works Department advertised to hire an open Sodas one position on favor.
All you can please sign. Hey, John.
I think she went to the restroom. Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here with another budget work session. The only thing that changed was I went in and put COLA on all of the personnel. And obviously now this cost of COLA has been removed here. And then I did add in the page for Riley County Rural Fire District number one for us to review and discuss after Thursday's conversations. Any questions on our regular developmental worksheet?
Did you add in the part-time person for county interns?
No, so the, that what my understanding of that was that they would have to figure that out in their budget, so I have not adjusted his budget and neither has Barry, but he has to find that within his budget to absorb.
Oh, he knows, okay, I didn't realize that.
That was my understanding from Thursday's conversation, was that that was the intent of the board. Okay. As of now, we cannot increase this number, we can only decrease.
You still need to decrease it a little bit and then stunt this to where you go.
I did put in here in my memo to get to the same number of mills as 2025, the budget would need to be reduced $249,000. So if we're trying to keep it flat, we need to cut $249,000.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
They mentioned the 250 number of disasters they got.
Oh, yeah. You know, a lot of departments have already made several cuts. You know, you had Public Works cut 250,000 and he had cut two intern positions as well, so that was $288,000 that we cut from Public Works, you know, prior. And we've just seen cuts across the board to try to get us as close to flat as we can. We set them for September 4th. Yes, you can still make changes all the way up, even after we publish. I would like to have this published, though I have to have it published by August 18th. And I also still want to have time to send it to our auditors, so I would, I would love to have this, you know, pretty well wrapped up at first week of August, so we can have time for our auditors to review. But if that doesn't happen, then we can push a tighter timeline on them, but.
Maybe not the most productive, but the easiest thing would be just to check in on the 250 from C I P.
Okay, is there consensus on that to cut another 250,000 from C I P? Yep, we do have a lot of unencumbered cash left in there that could cover those projects. If we were to bring more to you and have you approve them, it would just, we were already kind of at a deficit with dropping it down to 2.5, not, not really a deficit, but you know, covering all of the projects and our bond transfer, but yes, absolutely, you have enough, you have enough cash, yes.
Yeah. I think if we do that one, I think the 2026 and 2026 apartment list, you know, of once and or needs to be, and I look at, needs to be adjusted a little bit to offset that, but since I think we have made updates to facilities, a little bit more of the priority to reflect some of those changes in there, and I, I would feel comfortable with it if that.
Well, most of the items on the list are like equipment, so it's not necessarily facility, but.
And I've looked at that list, it's not a long list at this point in time.
No, it is not.
Over the next couple of years, I know we've got a large, yeah, a large software ask at some point in time, and yes, Commissioner McKinley just suggested things happen.
Yes, yeah.
And so need to be mindful of that, but we adjust accordingly and just do ones instead of one, twos, and threes throughout that list, I think we can I feel particularly confident we can adjust throughout what we've taken now.
So we can be, we can be a flat budget.
Flat.
I did have this figure too.
Could be about a million.
Yes.
About 1.1 wants to change terms since
if we do 250, right now, we're going to write up 1.2.
Yeah, so if you cut 250,000 off, we'd be about 975,000. Closer to a million over R and R, but we would be flat from the 2025 budget. Yes, mill, yes, mill levy.
Did we have any?
Yes, yeah.
And that's, that's absolutely true, what it is. But in order to take care of employees, in order to make sure statutory requirements are taken care of and our critical services are taken care of, at least that's, that they increase the cost and just the lack of supporting revenue, that's, that's where it's going to have to be.
Okay. Yes, absolutely, it is.
Just, yeah.
Okay, Catherine, are you in agreement of 250,000 off C I P?
Have we discussed any further the child licensure for that stand?
I have not heard any updates.
I've got to think the other counties are in their budget cycle, which I'd like to see where that stands currently too.
Yep, I can ask Diane where they are at in the process, but I have not heard anything since you guys gave her direction, so. Anything else on these before we jump into fire? Okay, so rural fire. You asked on Thursday about where some of these differences are, and some of it is the beginning cash balance, which we know just comes from, like, these are audited numbers now, so we have like our draft audit and and so we had some big expenditures in 2024 that we didn't necessarily budget for originally, and then transfer to fire station projects, so that's where some of the difference comes from. I would also like to remind all of you that that's the same for the general fund, everybody kind of took a hit in their cash balance, so I did advise Russell that everybody else has had to make cuts, and so I would ask him to look at his budget as well. But I don't know if the board had any direction on where you wanted to see cuts.
That being the vehicles that we purchased last year that.
Correct, so some of it was vehicles. And then we had transfers as well to like fire station projects. And then, yeah, the rural fire capital allies, where some of that vehicle purchasing came from.
Top 25,000 piece of insurance.
Yep. So let's go up here. Yeah, so part of that is also new buildings, so we have to factor in the possibility of new buildings coming in, and so that's where this might not, all of this might be in the wrong, some of this might be in the wrong spot, it may need to be adjusted up here, but that's where some of that comes in, and then, of course, vehicle insurance, they did tell us 30%. And then, of course, when you get new to us vehicles, and they might be newer years, that kind of factors into what that insurance cost may be as well, so just take that out.
It's actually going up with newer vehicles and not.
Well, that's my understanding that because they have, there's more to protect on it, right, so there's different things on there. Yes, so they paid off a bond. Yep, so that number has been checked, rechecked, and checked again and checked again, because the interest doesn't change, but the principal did, but it's because we did pay off a bond, but we have higher interest payments on one of our other ones going up, so that's where that is. Yes, and then one thing I'm sure I just want to bring to your attention, is this other insurance, you know, for 2024 still investigating this, so this is not an error on Russell's part or anybody at Riley County. This was our workman's comp audit, and so this was caught, actually, when we were doing budgets this year. And so that's why you're probably like, well, we spent $37,000 here, why are we not budgeting that high? We found that in our workman's comp audit that there was an error, and so we didn't, between Russell doing the budget this year and then we were processing our workman's comp audit again this year, we found that there are errors in multiple areas, so we're still investigating that, we actually have a meeting set up today for us internally to discuss more issues, because the workman's comp auditor that, you know, is with travelers is possibly coding things wrong, so we're trying to figure out that issue, so that's been fun, that's been a several month process trying to get that cleaned up, so.
It's going to go multiple percent and make everything work, you know.
Yeah. So that's why that number is so large compared to what it normally is, because this $7,800, $6,000, you know, this is, this is normal for rural fire district for paying for the firefighters. That $37,000 is not, so.
The life insurance, that's because we have more fire buttons.
Mm-hmm, yep. And that's your guys' separate, that life insurance line, that's the separate one that we do, right?
So.
The Firefighters Association.
So we pay 15% and the Fireman's Relief Association, which is money from the Kansas Insurance Commissioners Office, pays for 85%. Uh, well, no, we're the firefighter, like McKenzie's never, but Doug and Jake and I, it's for firefighters. So like Manhattan Fire, that's the same thing, for instance. Well, I don't think the volunteers have any, they don't have any state health right, because they don't have health insurance, they don't have K P N F. And then one other one, as I was reviewing some things, is on the vehicle insurance, just for example, from last year to this year, that's, that bill is 20 me well, what's the last, $27,000 more, just from 20 five to 26. Like Brittany said, we don't even have the other, the workman's comp one yet, and so we don't, our insurance costs not counting the other line, have went up since 23, it went up 300%. In 23.
Two new vehicles or is there?
It's, it's vehicles, life insurance, work comp, property or buildings.
No, but I think what he's saying is in the energy guns, newer vehicles too, so.
But, but our, our, our vehicles are, are insured, Brittany, at replacement costs. So it doesn't matter if the old truck was only worth 20,000, we have set values on those trucks. And so, yes, the newer truck may have costs, may bring it up a little, but not too much, if the old truck was only worth $20,000, but we're insuring it for 100, because if it burns up or crashes or whatever, we got to replace it today. We can't replace it with a $20,000 truck.
Right.
We have to spend 100,000 or whatever. And so I don't know how much the newer trucks truly affect the base rate of that insurance as far as it doesn't go up necessarily because we buy a new truck, because the new truck is probably worth that 150, and we'll keep it insured at 150, just for the number. If that makes sense.
That's why the transfer to rural fire capital outline low last year to back up the issue was.
So, so what we talked about last time is, you know, quite frankly, you know, if you look through that budget, there's several line items where I cut on the three Cs a lot, you know, for example, 38, it's that $25,000 on. 3150, I cut $40,000. But I, you know, those are areas where we intentionally over budgeted because one, we never know how big a fires, how much fuel we're going to burn. But then knowing that that's money to transfer at the end of the year into our capital outlet to buy vehicles from. You know, emergency management, you know, I, I've heard a lot of treat everybody the same, but we're not the same. Emergency management, EMS, public works, the appraiser's office, not just weed. They don't budget to replace vehicles. They get that from CIP. With fire district doesn't go to CIP for vehicles. We have to do that internally. And what we talked about last, when we were talking about budget previously is having it reflect more accurately. And so we cut a lot in the three Cs and increase that transfer to capital outlay. Like I have this sheet here, if, but I'll share with you.
I mean, this should, you know, talk about a schedule for our trucks. This is a sheet over here. We have a bunch of old ones. Well, that, so the ones yellow are the ones that, you know, shouldn't be the question, probably best for you.
And red ones are the ones that are on the list to come. You know, most of the, the ones that say pumper by them to replace that with a good truck, you know, you're talking $200,000 and that's for a used truck. Everybody else, you know, and I'm not complaining about this, but when we talk about treat everybody the same, everybody else, public works EMS buys new all the time. We buy used trucks and we're not complaining about this. But I think everybody needs to realize that to go buy a new truck, that's a minimum of $450,000. And no, we're not MFD, but when MFD goes and buys a new pumper truck, it's a million plus. But if we were to buy a new one, it'd be four to maybe 500. But we don't buy new ones. We buy used ones.
Sorry, what's your balance in capital outlay now?
Approximately 400 to 500, 4500,000, I think. I think it's around, around 500,000. I mean, we could spend that today and it wouldn't be wasting a penny. And we'd still only about have about half the equipment replaced that we really need to replace in the next couple of years. And so, you know, again, we have to fund our, the district, fire district has to fund its own CIP. You know, and, and I, you know, it was mentioned, oh, we could buy a truck out of CIP every once in a while. But that's not really fair to the taxpayer because 50,000 of our taxpayers don't, don't pay fire district one taxes. You know, fire district one is supported by approximately 20,000 of our taxpayers. And, and, uh, you know, Manhattan gets a little benefit from fire district one because we mutual aid them and we work together. And but it, I don't know that it justifies buying a truck out of CIP.
I'd say so is that we've been.
Absolutely. Right.
That was, I had that question. Look on, um, tax things, the off city, people inside Manhattan township that's outside of city, they seem to do it. People inside Manhattan, Seattle.
Now, every other city does. Ogden, Leonardville, Riley, Randolph, they all are part of our district number one. But, but yeah, like that sheet I just gave you, that's, that's our current inventory trucks. The yellow ones are the ones that we have as, hey, those really should have been replaced probably a year or two ago. But the other side of it is we've been saving up to build fire stations. You know, luckily with the ARPA, that helped us get to where we could start buying a few trucks again. But for the most part, since I've been here, we've bought very few trucks because we've been saving to build fire station. And so the truck replacement is probably a little bit behind. Well, there isn't probably, it is. But, uh, you know, we, we cut a lot of the three Cs, but, and then moved a lot of that to capital outlay to better reflect, you know, what we're actually spending the money on.
Then what are the red ones?
The next in the line to get replaced. Are the ones that we ought to be replaced. The yellow one should have been replaced a year, a couple of years ago. The red ones are the ones that we need to be replacing now and in the next few years. And so like I said, most of the ones that say pumper in the call sign column, you know, to replace that with a good use truck, you know, 150, $200,000 to get a, a decent one, to get a nice one, 250 to 300. But that's still a 10-year-old truck, you know? Again, that's not a new truck. To replace it with a new truck, you're looking at 450,000. The ones that, you know, on the, the, uh, there's a grass truck in the yellow, you know, that's going to be 80 to 100,000 to get a, a good one, a good one. But, you know, just alone there, if you do, I think, uh, did the math here somewhere. There's about 1.6 million there that we could spend today on used trucks, not new ones. And we wouldn't be wasting any dollars.
But this year on year, is that the similar car to the part of the aging?
I think it's the, uh, you're talking about the, that's the, that's the year model of the truck. We've gotten rid of some of it. Some of the trucks we purchased. Yeah, we're down that, we're, we're doing good. We're down to only one truck from the 1970s. We only have one truck older than me still.
Isn't it typical though for rural fire districts to purchase used equipment as opposed to use like a first class city? I mean, our size.
Uh, like Pot County, for example, with the most of their.
This county set up different than us.
Their, their, their consolidating fire district buys all new trucks. I just talked to him this morning, just to ask that question. Probably 80% of what they buy is new in Pot County.
What about Coffee County assessment or setup like us?
Um, it's all over the board, like, like my home county, Coffee County, they buy all new. It just depends. It's, it's, and that's like, like I've said before, you know, in the past, we've relied a lot on military surplus vehicles. But we, we can't get those anymore.
I've been here throughout that whole time.
We, we can't get those anymore. They're, they're just hardly, hardly available.
For the parts from the problem.
Well, yeah, and like, like that 1970s truck, we have some, we have tires sitting in the shed, but once they're gone, they don't make them anymore. We're either going to have to change the wheels and have them custom made or just get rid of the truck because we can't buy tires anymore.
Real problem is, is how you get to where those trucks used to be able to get.
Right.
Exactly. You don't have anything to do that now.
Throw, throw 10 ATVs at it versus one truck, you know, 10 ATVs, but I mean, yeah. But, um, you know, another thing that we're facing is, is the forest service is looking at 80% budget cut. And so. Well, no, um, what, what I'm indicating there is from a support on a big fire. And so like the airplanes, for example, they've become critical to put a fire out and, and get our guys home two or three days, not hours, days sooner. That bills could start coming to us if the forest service truly gets cut by 80%. And if we want an airplane, we're probably going to have to write the check. Yeah, we don't pay for that right now. Forest service slash the state pays for that, but, and that's $4,000 an hour. So obviously we aren't going to call for them near soon. Unless we really think, hey, if we can get an airplane in here now, you know, for two hours and that gets us out of here two or three days or 10 days sooner, then yeah, we're going to call for them, but it's going to be quite the decision. So those are the things we're facing going into 26 that we don't know about, you know? And that, you know, as you all know, 97% of my staff is volunteer. So, you know, 90% of, 7, 97% of my staff with stipends and stuff cost us 40, 30 or $40,000 last year. You know, so less than one, one full-time equivalent position. And, and keeping them in at least respectable equipment is one critical step of recruitment and retention.
I don't know if you have any other questions for me.
I appreciate the initial statement. Went through it the first time.
So would you like me to bring this back on Thursday, just showing the $250,000 cut?
Yeah, please.
Is there anything else? Do you want to see Russell's budget again on Thursday? Are you comfortable with it?
Just leave it. Yeah, leave it in there for now.
Anything else you guys would like me to bring back? I mean, I definitely can, but I think you might tell me to get lost. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
I guess you guys have got some other meetings to go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't have anything else, so I'll go ahead and.
That's all I'm like, there's fishes. Remember you asked for it.
No, that's it. Then I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the July 21st meeting in the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and segmented. July 21st meeting of Riley County Commission is all a very.